Yeah.
Yes, you do. Let's have an approval of the minutes. Kathy, first, since my name is in all favor. All right, Dan, thank you very much. Basically, for these first two, waiting for soccer review. So B and C run a step forward. Pretty. Well, worse than the plans.
Yeah.
Want to just give us a summary of what we've changed. More, I know I've talked to Doug and I've talked to our parish and we're all set on the engineering. All that guys, it's legally, we're all set.
Mark's on to.
Oh, hi, Mike.
Okay. Bruce Pollak, owner of B and C Storage.
Okay.
I'm going to just briefly introduce the project and any questions you got.
My name is Colin Don, CEO of B and C Storage. We were here a few weeks ago regarding our conversion to self-storage existing building. And we have just come back with completing the board's request. And one of the main things is we removed the building that was in question from the land. Yeah, right there, probably last time that we met. And there was, there was several other things that we, that we completed as, as the board's discretion.
Do you have the tower or something?
Our exact comfort tree is just some details. Sorry, this time, if there are any other questions.
I think we're pretty well versed. Gavin, anything new? Yeah, I think, I think we're really excited about the project. Thanks. I'm excited. I make a motion.
I just want to make sure we've got the right date on that, that I know.
I think they left the date that he leave the line for. On your signature.
No, just went over the, the last date of the.
Oh, it's.
Box six, yeah, it was right here. Uh, six, nine, twenty three.
All right, so this is B and C Storage. A motion to approve the site plan dated June ninth, twenty twenty-three with a binding that this board has reviewed. The common planning board referral dated June second, so second. Twenty twenty-two, which found no significant adverse standard company or countywide implications to the following conditions. No outdoor storage. These approvals for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the funding board chairperson. The applicant requires all of the work shown, completed by the applicant or persons that they're acting here in compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or additions or spoken word materials from the site plan documents are not approved or something. Further site plan review. Like June second, twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two? Twenty three. Thank you, Gavin. That amount of that way.
Yeah, I had a quick question. The signage for that one, the traffic, is there signs?
Yeah, we do have the wayfinding sign. It's actually just a detail up here.
The arrows on the.
Yeah, so we had it right on straight to right, right here, kind of in the front of the.
All of them.
Second.
Second. All of them. That's second. Good. Yeah, I'm gonna take just a minute, public time. This gentleman, I know personally, he. He asked a couple favor, community favors relative to the bicycle, two thousand bicycle. And just recently, Mary, Mary Nelson. Yeah, the, all of the school supplies and things, the donated storage for the community, these two organizations. Very impressive. But also enjoy working with you and the team.
Thank you.
Yes, I know, like, I've been in other minutes, but can you be your name signature?
Sure. It's Bruce Pollak and it's P O L O C K.
Colin Don, C O L L S, I had D O N A H.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. You. Eric.
Yeah.
Ryan.
Hey.
Right there. This is one we were just waiting for the comments. They came through. Doug was there, was Terry, nothing. Mark, nothing new on, on this?
No.
You didn't.
Nope, nothing new.
Okay. Any questions for the board? I'm getting nervous, Terry. Yeah. Want to say something?
Thank you. During this thing, so.
We're not throwing any curveballs on this.
Okay, yes.
You obviously, most of the site plan last dated May ninth, twenty twenty-three with the following findings and conditions. By the, yeah, kept working with the board and it's not a project appropriate for a high-tech zone district of the town, particularly with respect to the architectural. Probes made to the, to existing buildings on the site, site plan also, also approved as suitable for the high-tech district of the board review. That common planning board referral dated June twenty-eight, twenty-three, twenty-one, wasn't it? Which found no significant adverse inter-community or countywide intentions. No outdoor storage, there's some conditions, no outdoor storage of any materials or items of any sort permitted on the site. This approval, this for plants and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the funding board chairperson. The applicant requires all of the work shown, completed by the applicant, voted district, I would say, in compliance. Any proposed changes, additions, additions to the spoken word or materials, site plan are not approved and are subject to further site plan review. Section, section one ninety-two dash one twenty-two. Served a great. Your motion, second, second, all favor. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Very short. Right, so. But only just. Um. Bob? We, I mean, I.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's one of my brothers.
I know, but. It's the one that bought the sale, so I need this. I apologize.
You call the worst. Good. Thank you to the town for seeing us today. Appreciate your flexibility.
Well, we're, we are really looking forward to side about this project.
And too, I mean, it's kind of look nice. Pretty excited. Oh, five.
You have a talent to take.
Yeah. Got a, while this flows, we had a power line on fire outside of our office today, so we exited in a hurry. Kirk over.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Interesting. Yeah.
A lot of.
Yeah.
Oh. Every one of us here with this. Gavin, would you? Not just this one. I've talked about the.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Pre-COVID.
All right, so without further ado, this is cornerstone comments. We're at a three and a half acre site found across the. Found by Wenchuk Hill Road, Jamesville Road and forty-one ramp. What we're looking to do here is a mixed use project that is in, in full compliance with the M U V overlay district. We are O and P for our zone with any two districts, looking to maximize and do something that's totally in step with that. Scheme, scheme. The first floor, it's a, so it's a four-story building. There is one store, one ground floor of businesses that will be commercial and restaurants. There is underground parking over that and then above that eighty-two residential units. The total square footage of the building is thirty, thirty-four thousand, thirty-six thousand square feet. Yeah, per floor, it's a footprint. And it has, it features some patio spaces screening from the road. And then here, kind of off my conversation with us about perhaps doing some form of reserved parking. To allow for a test flexibility in the building. I've noted that we have two hundred and seventy-seven space to show on the plan now. It's a one-to-one compliance with seventy-person, seventy-seat restaurant of some commercial space and then eighty-two units. So I sort of give you up the space to make it compliant parking ratio. But obviously, we're not building it to that standard and the architecture is still everything. So I want to work with the town and just have an open conversation, a conduit, just talking about what we're doing inside the building. Their collab works through the parking outside is going to continue to change as we do any spaces inside. So that restaurant may be more than seventy, less. At this point, we're in the ball rolling, getting forth opinions, if we want to start putting together a checklist.
Yeah, that was one point. If, if the restaurant got a little larger, where would the parking be? And resurrect something that was a condition in the first plan. And it, it, as long as this, this will be on code under. Sure. So this is no clever design of a travel gas station. It's just.
No, there's nothing hidden there. What you see is parking in that under room.
Yeah, we can basically request for. You said.
So I. Number one.
So where is the other parking? So it's within the footprint of the building, it's ninety spaces within it. Trying to get into the architecture.
Does that primarily for residence testing or?
I think we would do it that way. We also had a, just trying to, you know, record everything. We had an offline conversation regarding these stations and we have no interest in putting any other building. We agree that that may not be the best.
I think if, if there is any discussion, you can. That way, because, yeah, there's a lot of issue right now with the batteries.
Yeah.
In buildings. Fire department's not making it get to them, so.
Yeah, we absolutely would put them on top. And that's, that's wise.
So they have ninety spaces, it's separate, two seventy-seven.
Two seventy-seven includes the ninety, but the ninety are within.
And that's included in reserve.
Right, no reserve, nothing. This is all within this spread line, property line.
So you can mention that the restaurant. The restaurant is there, we need vision. Outdoor seating. Yeah, this restaurant.
Yeah, and that's a hope of, we, we still have to kind of marry the site plan and the architecture. And I want to pull that out just to show you. We had big ninety to stab at it, but also render it, did a little wow that sort of integrates what we have of these areas here. We would hope to do outdoor seating for the restaurants.
So the restaurant's going to be on the Wenchuk side?
Yep. And then if I.
So we did talk a little bit about patio. Stand over that.
Right, yeah.
How you doing that? Mike, did you apologize? Did you, when we worked on this, you had the, the relationship with the town relative to the use of it as a, or a burning.
That particular area is so large and there is some town property there. Way to make the project more attractive, utilize that whole thing for burn landscaping, trees. And it's ideal the way we got it pushed up there to have that decking area.
Now, did you, did you talk to the town district call? I thought that you had some things not, not formally legally submitted.
It's just a back and forth that. We could either do a land swap or we can get a variance rate up to. If there's town property, great, then. Be willing to go into transaction with the town to make it work. I think what you see the modeling, how the restaurant could work in the corner. If you work that, just really ask.
Let me just, because we'll be working this and obviously you want to facilitate it as much as possible. What's the process?
Well, we just did it.
Yeah, a little crosswalk.
We just did a crosswalk.
And that's why I mentioned.
Look a little bit faster. Faster.
It's something where you come to us with a formal recommendation, we then recommend to the town board. And then.
The abandonment of a portion of the, of the range.
Um, now, same transaction. Originally had the original Wenchuk development. I acquired that.
So that's the same thing.
It's the same thing. Yeah. Yeah. So that would be a good addition to the project and allow fancier. Doug, you're, you're.
Jerry, you got your. If, if we were doing, if you want to do something with the access road, build into this site or.
Um, like make it private. Instead of public.
It was, yes. Right, that, I mean, it's not going to go in an endland. I mean, it's the house superintendent, they never.
He says we're the. Yeah, machine center.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this red line, I think you were gonna, maybe yes, this is our, our property idea. So we are coming in and if you have sort of a, and the decisions in person, they just kind of straight in. So anyway, Doug.
I mean, Rock, Rock said he, I'm, I'm, Jim, I'm talking about to. Some tip. The access agreement or whatever, but I mean, if you're going to try to get more property on the lower end, you do it all as one. Don't you think?
Go ahead.
So. If. If there's digital property added on that south side. I think my concern would be that the building would start to grow down towards Wenchuk. I don't know that I don't want the building to slide down anymore. I understand that you're trying to achieve more property. You know, for Birmingham, for landscaping, for patio, like that, I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I just wouldn't want to see the property all that slice out, the building start to slice out.
Nice. Yeah, no, I, we're happy with the size of the building.
I think what I would say about that, well, there's obviously the variance issues. I'm not sure where that would leave things with. Maybe they would just be denied, but the town board was, was pretty adamant when they worked with the cornerstone group about. Like chicken and eggs that like, don't even think about, you know, us Steven and stuff until you do X, you know, to make sure that was the project they wanted. So I think that would probably be the same thing. They're not going to be like, oh, here you go, and here's a piece of land. It always very.
Which, but no, it's gonna.
It was very contingent on all of it being what the town board wanted, so I think that would, I hear that.
So I would work on it simultaneously with the architectural and all of the other plans, engineering with that aspect. Because that, I don't want that to hold up the project and it's sort of what happened with our.
Right.
With the crosswalk.
Yeah, and these roads are busy, they're a little bit loud, so I don't know that it's in our interest to move the building. Even if it stays the same size.
Right, to a point, Nathan, what does?
Yeah.
Which M U V are you in?
Two.
Have you looked at that floor ratio issue?
Uh, not yet, no.
I, because you know, one of the things.
Yeah.
I'm very curious about it because we're about to recommend legislation and Sam Gordon was very involved in this. Original legislation when he was at the town is now working, you know, as a consultant. And he had recommended that we remove those maximum and minimums. And we didn't, just because we just didn't really have a good picture of it, like projects haven't come in. But his recommendation was we should take them out of all of the zones.
How many?
He interrupted.
How many acres each day was?
Three, three point five eight. And Jay, with all due respect, in most boards, and I'm not accusing you of this, but most boards that we've interacted with in the area, they don't understand floor area ratio. And it's sort of a hang on to the code that it, it actually doesn't. Sometimes the restrictions of floor area ratio will go directly against the code. So when that happens, and I don't, I don't know that it does here.
No, I'm.
Um, when that happens, we just ignore that if anything comes up across that grid. I have that variance. Most people don't understand and they don't break it up because it would contradict the code.
Right, that is a question.
Yeah, we, we did.
What's the square foot in the building?
Thirty-six.
T X stands fire area ratio.
Yeah.
Thirty-six with a hundred.
And we didn't have a dense lot down. Thirty-six thousand.
Four by four.
Yes.
Minus seventy-eight hundred thirty-two.
Seven.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, that's three point five eight acres.
That's a hundred and fifty-five thousand, a hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet. And a minimum of one F A R E P to be. That building right now is approximately a hundred and forty-six, that's your, um, ten thousand square feet short of one. On that. Right.
And this is.
And therefore.
Wouldn't.
Sam's right.
Well, yes, and no, I mean.
This is the most dense project that I've worked on in town.
Right.
This, you know what I mean? That's, that's.
That's, that's part of conversation. Do those need to be modified slightly in there to meet? Possibly.
For, for the time being.
Yeah. We work with very.
Okay.
But, you know, I mean, the, the intent B F A R is to maintain. And if we eliminate B F A R, then, then we start valuing how dense. But what's the appropriate project for the site? Does that have residential density or commercial? Probably both.
So this is all one building. Part of the face is the brand. Anybody talk to me today, make sure you have a chair, white man or all. Changing.
Well, what you're not even about.
Concerned, they, you know, they're going to change the angry.
Well, you know, I, I, it, it does, that brings up a lot and this is how much will change, but. Right now, they're only projecting three, calling for three lanes from Kirkville on. And I, I, actually, I thought it could be moved to three lanes. Well. All the way down, with one exception, that's the, the bridge. And that's the, I don't think that they're gonna build a bridge over. Part of the track. Really, the bridge over tracks. It's pretty tough. You know, where Kirkville, they're building, they're tracking down. Okay, I mean, I'm not always against all. Yeah. Or, or the rest over Kirk, oh, oh, over Tennessee Street. That's two, that's the one.
How much is speaking to me? It looks great.
That's two, that's only two.
No, it's fair.
What happens is change applies to these.
So I know it's a one building. It's sister, we had another project and the developers were very hungry to get the rest built. And it's been a, just a bit up there, but it was a state road. And as it was written, legally, if you've built something, if the developer done something and then the right of way needed to be expanded. The state would buy back and sort of pay for, you know, like amend your product. And they, they would cover the, the cost of it, you have to go back and read. Uh, with the planning board.
So do you have a plan B to do that in case?
I've spoken with D S P, I've not been engaging with all of. The things open to the public, like everything specifically saying that I own this property. All of them said, no, I'm not going to do it. Now. It's a big huge project, things could change, but everything that we have today says that nothing's going to be done.
That makes sense because it's.
Yeah, well, but also, I, I would have to have that third lane with, with almost mandate with some changes would be making. And that's not happening. And I, and I, to be honest with you, I think it should go into, you know, Tennessee Street.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, that, that one lane is going to back up right into, into the traffic. I don't know how, but manage that, but at any rate, it's going to be two lanes. When I look at the bridge, I'm talking about the bridge that breaks right after the Vanvo. Actually, going north, but south, that, that's, that's a four lane pyramid that can.
Because the other concern would be closer to the road now, noise, renting the town. That's all I was thinking.
The elevation pushing here, you know, this there, there, so you know, we had a push up. That's where you're going. One profile would be up just because of sound. It's the kind of big versus, like, those, the first floors commercial, very visible from four eighty-one, all the ramps. I think we had a lot of interest, really solid, long-term tenants, holding on to the space. It's our interest to get a little bit of tenants, and good sound next, so that we can track to long-term tenants.
You also have that, that topography and elevation opposite your, your parking at some of these, so that's not a buddy. Truly underground parking, just not correct.
So what are you planning? One, two bedrooms, a combination?
Yep, combination. You know, we'll be talking more to national permanent retailers. We should.
So it's not going to be an senior project, just to.
Can you move access? Can you, can you move access?
You go there, yeah.
Yes. And is there any pedestrian access? Restaurant. Uh, walking distance of my. Correct. Yeah, so we're showing nominarily an outdoor space here. That could be accessible, I think, bringing support to residential.
Right, on the left side of the project, there's the, the, that we brought up. Right now, we've had just glass right there. As the project evolves, we'll decide if there are going to be balconies there. But all the one bedroom, anybody that doesn't have a balcony, would have access to that second story. So that everybody gets. With the.
But the nude sunbathing is going to have the top. Or that's.
Right, right, right. What is the, the height?
You know. Question, I don't know. We don't have like a formal elevation yet. I think for the time, it's still a conceptual stage.
Yeah, just make sure you're reviewing the M U V. Yeah, it's, it's a fourth or a fifty play. Uh, limit on, so, you know, you can look at the building code and make sure that you're compliant with the definition for building height.
That's right.
In there, because I think it deals with a lot of the grade around buildings.
Six feet away, all sides.
Yeah, so there's that and you gotta be hundred fifty.
Right, and the parking would work.
Walkout, do you consider a walkout with that?
Yeah, and you, you talk about the building.
So from the walk.
Yeah, so like, and that's, and that's why I was looking inside elevation.
Right, that's what I was.
Parking underneath in there, that's gonna, that'll impact the height of the building that's in there. But you gotta, you gotta do the count all the way around, show us that that all complies with the M U V.
You're doing a hotel downstairs in Peaceville, there's been a lot of, you know, shovel and dirt around to get the building height to be just right. And, you know, we're dead inches and you've decided to play the game.
Yeah. But just make sure you're going through and your technology is one of those points.
Yeah, we, we, I want to go back to Kevin's question because I, in terms of sidewalks. You know, we, I don't want to say it's to nowhere because we're hoping that there is a sidewalk that goes just to the library. And coming down, it could come down the other side of, of Jamesville Road. We have personal interest in that and, you know, there's going to be a crosswalk and there's, there. There are offices across the street. Up and down and obviously Boulder Heights. Up and down and uh obviously Boulder Heights.
Uh, so you're talking about on the um west side of Jamesville Road. Um, the only reason I bring that up, I know I spoke with a few people at the town board and uh. You know, I I'm a cyclist, I ride my bike down there, crossing or staying on the side of. The Jamesville Road with that on ramp there, cars are accelerating and crossing. That on ramp right there is very dangerous. If if the sidewalk would be safer on the other side of Jamesville, that's relative. Sa- safer than putting it on that side, just because you've got a nice ninety degree corner to cross on the.
I do the same, yeah.
I agree.
So.
Yeah, but I'm saying, but once it gets to your property, how is the pedestrian traffic?
I think I think the so question is, can you get a sidewalk to that intersection? There is a.
Yeah.
Stoplight or pardon me, the the cross.
They're showing their plan there too.
No, I agree with you, I'd write the same, it's uh it's even hazardous uh on the other side.
It is.
Because you have the the green arrow and it's really hard to tell. It's it's similar to what's up here um at at the corner. Uh, across the firehouse. Down below, it's very convoluted and I have that very dangerous.
No, we'd want a sidewalk along the Woodchuck side. There's already the cross signal there, it's all set up for it, so.
Is it, is it, let's just have a little bit of trees on that side, that the memory line sidewalk.
Uh, this is a this is a retaining.
That's a retaining.
Yeah, to get us that height, so that we first up and. Um, existing conditions wise, I believe this area here currently acts as sort of a whole furnace drainage of the hill. And I think what we're planning on doing is uh adding a structure in and then. I think I this isn't gonna, I think we can make a sidewalk with this, but drainage wise, something needs to be done with this. It's uphill water coming down onto the property because it's currently the right of way, right? So what we would do is just like the crossbow, we have to bypass it safely. And there is a a B uh pipe.
Goes under.
Yeah, that exists now, yes, yes, so a culvert across. Yeah, so here's the the spray line here is the existing one. And then this dark black one, sort of, we're anticipating, it's just kind of continuing to bypass, because this exists as sort of a whole out. You know, fall of the uphill drainage that comes out there. So we would have to kind of work with the rating there a little bit to make it work, but I don't think that would be too difficult to do.
Yeah, could I jump in there?
Before Mark.
I I I was, yeah, I'm glad you brought this up, because uh. It it is something important to look at, I mean, it's a, you've got a pretty good sized culvert there and a good big drainage area, thirty six inch culvert. You know, you're proposing a forty two, uh, you know, this was looked at underneath the previous plans. And um, yeah, where you're showing that I, you you've got some low spots and a and a, you know. Kind of a flood root right along Woodchuck Hill Road, where you've got those two little stubs coming out to the south. Uh, and you got another culvert that comes across there. You really should just move that whole storm sewer out to there and not have the little stubs and branches, you you you're not gonna want under the retaining wall. Berms, landscaping, et cetera, so you you really gotta take a look at that. I know this is nuts and bold stuff, but.
What I told me you were gonna say, Mark.
Yeah. Yeah, well, you know, and and there's other utilities you gotta look at and consider along the Jamesville Road corridor. Uh, I can't remember, we've got the water mains over there, but you definitely gotta look at that corridor through there with utilities and. And and what you can do through there.
Mark, the other question I got, oh, that one. Utilities, what is the plan to get?
Uh, higher, you know, national grid. To do a a redo of poles in the middle of the property for um looking to go to the south side of Woodchuck Hill Road. And reading next week and actually Thursday. Um, so.
Yeah, there's enough, there's there there are no actual lines up against Woodchuck South.
Uh, now, let's see, uh.
Yeah, I think this.
Right, a cross there and running up and down Woodchuck up the hill. Right, I think they sort of uh, it's like a line shape, it goes down and cuts across the site, but I can't picture whether or not. And the reason I'm saying is like, we have an opportunity right now. Working with National Grid is to get rid of a lot of overhead lines, you know, bury them so that we have them. Have a beautiful building analysis, you're gonna stick holes and wire right in front of it.
I'm a Jamesville side.
I mean, I'm well, Jamesville, well, Woodchuck, right.
Woodchuck, yeah, I'm really pushing to go to south side, I'm sure.
Right, that's, but that's what I mean, it's like, you're gonna take, you're gonna take the lines from running through the middle of the site right now, you're gonna break them down on the Woodchuck. And you've got the ones on Jamesville, so now you've got this kind of. Beautiful corner of the building that you try to change, and now you've got holes and wires that you're putting right in front of the building.
Yeah, it it'll cross over, you say, on the Woodchuck there, you're still gonna have those lines. But they can clean them up, I guess that's really the meeting there to see what we can. Get National Grid available, underground is, I believe, a vividly, I've looked at the project. We got Christ's commission uh back six years ago.
You know about the uh certain utilities, the the high pressure gas plant, where is that?
Yeah, I'm sure, I bought the property of uh east side of National Grid. They routed that fourteen inch shot.
So where is that, just so, because that kind of brought us, what is pretty well towards priority and under forty one, where does it come into your problem?
Um, the back tree line there on the side there.
Okay, so it's way above.
Uh, it runs parallel with that and uh heads right across to Woodchuck.
Okay.
Now, that was pretty interesting.
Yeah. But that was far, this is the this more than I know, but it was, that that line was a different. Diameter than the high pressure lines that go and like from it on the golf course out. And going the other way to uh Jamesville Road, and so they had to make it so they could run robotics through it to inspect. Make sure that it's all safe, so they, of the multi million dollar project. Ducking on our property, your problem. Store things on yours. But anyway, so that's that's an easement, right? You gotta be really, can't do anything nearby.
Um, they put a lot of parking, I need more parking to give me a vocal lease.
That's what you had before with that. On top of the, above the.
Yep, the top of it, they they wouldn't let you park on your landscape or something above. I needed a.
So I know, I think that's probably on top of this already, but make sure that they're reviewing. The section of code on aerial access, because if you have those red lines close to the building, gonna change your construction type. You're not gonna be able to get any sort of ladder drop or anything near the buildings.
What did I say about that? I believe we've already shown the fire marshal and he commented and he measured the areas. They're gonna fight it from the back.
You mean inside of the party?
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, so section D, appendix D fire codes, does that, where the longest part of the building is, you have to do within fifteen feet to thirty feet. But every fire marshal has the right to say, I think we can make this work, we look at it and.
Right, he's on his.
Yeah, yeah, and we had like a preliminary meeting and he thought with the building with this. Uh, yeah, he was, he was optimistic with doing it on the inside, I'd love to go back with the. You have around, but instruction types, straight pillars, you know, that still has to be, it's not worked out.
Doug and Terry, do you have any comments?
I think Mark, Mark certainly. Yeah, I started comments.
The last comment, which would maybe out of the ball, the ones that.
Yeah, tho- those are pretty, you know, based on the last one, but I'm sure many of these will apply this time. Um, I guess I do, I just, while we're kind of talking about utilities and such, I. Uh, I I, there is a town water line that runs along the east side of Jamesville, pretty much on the property, actually. And your southwest corner of the building is only about eight feet off of it. Um, and the other, I I think you're, you were saying there might be a retaining wall that runs through there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, I I, you know, any grade changes or, you know, so obviously you're gonna have to consider that and. I I I I do, well. Knowing town utilities, sometimes the easements aren't there that are supposed to be there, but you might be encroaching within the easement if there is one there.
Yeah, they have a look at all the, all the utilities, be sure, especially.
Where's your access to the underground parking?
So it's on both sides of the building, so you can drive in here and here, and then so this, this Woodchuck Hill, it's sort of. Call it medium steep here, it really elevates up further down, so you're kind of going up here. As the site is a little bit lower over here, so you're going up, then as you enter, you fall down a little bit here and then this is, this is uh. Been in any of the apartment underground parking garages, but typically, it's it's a short run and it's pretty steep down to get into there, so it'd be. They were planning on it being, yeah, accessible on both sides, so this, this part of the site, you're up higher, you've, you're kind of going down here, then you're going even steeper over here. And then this gently sort of falls down, so this is like more of an upper parking area. Yeah, exactly, and this is sort of the lower parking area, so this is at the same elevation as this, they're both, this is a level through here in the parking garage, so. Lowest, medium, low, lowest down here, and then this is kind of a stairway up, if you will.
Is that one way or trans or two?
Um, I think we're gonna do one way. I I don't know that we worked through that completely, I think that depends on.
Yeah.
Since it's inside the building, it it, we have to talk about it, I I'm, I'd love to give you a firm answer.
I just misunderstood, who did you say parking garage?
It's sort of like a parking garage, right, because we're under right on green walls, yeah.
Blue eyes in the basement.
Yeah, but when he talked about the upper part, he said parking garage, so just thought, wait a minute, we have the garage there, okay, okay, I got it.
So a- as you make progress, uh, you know, say this, as we said with Amazon or any large project, you know, bring. Work with our consultants, Doug, Terry, Mark, and Amy on any issues, certainly if you wanna. Uh, you know, all works executed. Will be available, absolutely.
I'll um, talk to my attorney and um, see if, you know, if we can work something out in that land, that'd be terrific.
Yeah, we worked with both Amy and and uh the town attorney, Mark, Matthew Bow.
Uh, yeah.
I heard your petition went through the, the internet says. This is all.
It's like this, same, yeah. That's funny. And also, you're saying. Up in Milwaukee, so see it all.
All right. Yeah, thank you, what is interesting here is this water line is actually justified for also to the. The M board side of the incident, so I don't know that we're incredibly allowed to do that.
Well, you got, you know, you know, I need to drill, so we'll go, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
But as you get, you'll see, you'll get further along, bring them in, just to just to slow take the whole process.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Everyone, um, the next item, last item is the. Best use village, I totally open, like, uh, district, uh, M U B four, uh, the shopping town.
So the best version was the one that had the the red line, right? So what it was before and what it is now. Um, and the the red line is really adding that, I think.
Yeah.
I was gonna tell you, it's a new year, man, because I'm not gonna leave it, but uh, no, and I just uh, just. The the major items, you were going.
So involved in the initial, um.
I mean, the overlay.
Overlay and to, you know, kind of really emphasize what these changes are, and I think we've talked about them before.
Yeah, I think, I think that's definitely, we have talked about the, the idea on the M V B four is that. It's providing a lot of flexibility for properties that are. For size. Uh, it is basically built off of the M V B three. Terms of requirements that are in there, but allows an applicant to define. The parameters that they can. You know, it gives us the ability to review that, prove it, and the fact it's sandstone. Property, unless there's some issue down the line where they have to come back in front of us, you have the ability to basically know this. It is for sure.
This go, that goes to the town.
Anything substantial.
I just want to make sure that step, so, once this, once we recommend. It's like the town board, they then approve, but. If anything comes back to us relative to.
So there'll be something, like the details still come back, the stuff, but if it's anything major, which is substantial, that we define it here. It's gotta go back to town. But, um, for the most. Yeah, but for the most part, once it comes to planning board, planning board is just, it's. Do it thing.
Same, because I, it's not a guideline or everything.
It it becomes, it becomes basically a negotiation between the vertical earth. And the planning board, it's it's.
Under these umbrella.
Right, right, but it but it's very flexible and uh that's what.
For large properties like these, the shopping town, it's gonna be other than town, like, they need that flexibility.
Yeah, they, so they don't go back to the town, the the process.
We had at the university. Yeah.
It's like a chief.
And you need one, and you need two, and you need three, or four, great, how we combine them where they are right now. It's when you get to larger properties that can necessarily sustain the M V B three on that property. We're allowing the possibility for them to define and get a little bit more fluid as to what they're doing for property, because that's.
Yeah, makes sense.
Um, you know, we did talk about the the drives, uh, you know, coming into them, overall vision for those. So there, we broke it down in terms of primary, secondary, tertiary, street system. Uh, you know, your primary drive would be the entry drive into the property. Of what that's supposed to, like, like a city street, gravel, parking, tree line, you know, active age. Buildings on the street. We're not asking, we're not allowing surface parking lots to be adjacent to the streets on the primary. Have to be kind of tough back in secondary or tertiary. Right? They're all the same. So I'm close restaurants, everybody.
Yes.
So it's like it's on the township, basically.
Exactly.
Now, is this gonna be strictly for shopping town, please?
No.
It is for anything that is.
Twenty five acres.
Okay, take US.
You know, we've, we've been talking with shopping town. Using it as as a case, we're looking at it in terms of other properties throughout the town. That are of that size, that we apply this to, should it apply to this one, same manner, shopping down that.
A lot of work to find into it, Doug, but.
Yeah.
Uh. Nation, uh, area, or some lesser degree, but. Uh, I think we're ready, you know, this this gives the developer a a free hand, that they. It it also though, puts a lot of uh responsibility back onto the planning board where you want it, but if not, but then if, if there's something. That they wanna more than tweak, they don't have to go back to the the.
Right, just make it a little smoother, okay.
So.
Any concerns about the sixty forty, like, are they close to those boundaries, as an example?
Sixteen forty.
The residential, you're referring to residential.
Oh, they.
They're.
Sixty one thirty nine or whatever.
They changed, do they want?
We changed it and and there was discussion and they're like, we can live with that, so I was quite, um, it was quite an easy.
Every year that we we thought.
Was it, was it changed to now?
Forty.
No, seventy, it was, what was it?
No, M U B three is forty and seventy. Uh.
Forty and seventy. I'm gonna be a really good architect, but.
It is, terrible method.
The only coverage was forty. The only coverage is forty. M U B three.
Forty, forty, sixty.
Forty, sixty.
Uh, well, max lock coverage is seventy. Okay, it's a, it's a purpose, that's.
Gotcha.
So it'd be forty percent building. Right, so.
You know, can we keep that definition with forty-six? What's, what's forty, which is sixty again?
Forty would be building. Resident, um.
Well, no greater than forty percent. Of the total area of the development plan can be residential. Pretty state, the primary.
Primary residential, that's what we're talking about, right?
Yes.
That, that's, we were trying to make sure that they work on the retail, and it just didn't become one big apartment.
Is that forty percent just in the footprint or the number of floors that are in each building?
No, it's only for if it's a primary use of a townhouse, there's no single families, um.
Those single families, all townhouses.
Either. Or in apartment building.
Yeah, so it would have to fall under the building code.
So there, which I think we originally had thirty-five percent.
It was, so if you have buildings like they're proposing.
Yeah, but that's. All a little different thing, the limitation is.
That's part of the six. That would be part of the six. It's if you had a a strictly apartment building, strictly townhouses. You know, those would fall into that forty percent because there's no vertical aspect. If they fall into the sixty, it's gotta have activating brown level use of commercial in there.
Because otherwise, it looks something like what they have, would would go. Beautiful.
Absolutely.
That's what they're looking for.
We're looking for.
And and hypothetically, to your point, Kevin, if five years from now. It's it's becoming more residential and there just isn't, the retail, I could tell you this, uh, as an example, that uh. Uh, the Air Force Base in Myrtle Beach, out of Myrtle, uh, they had retail. And apartments above it, nobody wanted to live there.
Right, that happened out in, um. Lysander too.
So they they converted them, you know, to whatever office or, they just, they they were too busy. They they didn't, people wanted to live.
Um, but I think that's, that's if you, if you build it correctly. You lay it out correctly. You won't have a problem, I mean, you think about any urban environment, right, you're, you have. Whether it's, it's, I mean, you can use Armory as an example, but any urban environment that's got street level use with apartments above. Right, so the type of people that want to live there are the type of people that utilize those.
I agree, I agree.
Right.
At the point, but being, if, now, five years, seven years. It's not working, for whatever reason, and then they want to change that percent, that would go back to the town board.
Yes, it would.
Town board, so that's the, that would, that's with recommendation, with recommendation, so they have to buy us first. Make that case, so we review and make that right.
Or we might say try harder.
We never looked at the demographics of who lives, you know. The sixty percent, you know, families, kids, professionals.
Professionals are our.
So even more yosseus, that were. I mean, you can go, we'd, we'd stay there, my wife would walk, when you went over, there's a big house down on the corner. You know, it's a dog room, or, it was a den, or dens, right there, and there's. Bank of whatever tower building going up next door, you, you don't even have, there's parking underneath. But if you leave your car, they'd never drive in.
Some people come around and walk everywhere.
Yeah, that's true.
But if you listen to the world news, the new world order, that's what they want, they want walking, everything is to be.
There's modest parking in the front. No, if you go there at three, you might feel a park in front of, you know, the Starbucks or someplace, or otherwise you have to go. A little bit more distance or if it's underground parking. Uh.
No, it's. And that's, that's the reason for for requiring. Parallel parking, so that it's not adjacent.
Yeah, I I think, you say primary, I thought on the, on the initial primary, there's no parallel parking.
On the, on the initial embrace, yes, like. Once it gets.
Once it gets into that, it's only.
Still that primary street, then you allow.
Parallel or.
And and.
There'd be hotels next to it there, too.
And, oh yeah, no, there's, the hotel, I think, is planned to be. You know, near the, the.
That was one of their interesting stories.
Yeah, classic tourist town, where you gotta go, you gotta find the. City parking lot, you have parking lot.
Exactly.
All right, let's uh, oh, I do want to publicly thank. Doug was very uh, uh, diligent, as as well as Jamie, David, everybody involved in this process, it's like.
We have to make a move.
Yes, we do.
And here it is.
Yeah. You ready?
Ready.
Well, I I thought you, you didn't make one of those. They're very brief and succinct.
These are simple projects.
Your other.
Wow, wow, and they.
Three majors, I know, I know, even more rareness is that if you, if you're shorter, if you're, if you're shorter than all the hours, it's just, I know, it's a little rare ask here. You're not pulling out.
You know, like your John said, oh, we'll do a work session, you know, same thing.
Okay, M U B legislative case, thank you, hopefully. Motion to recommend to the town board that legislation attached here to, we got here two in this. Uh, which notifies the M U V overlay zoning district of the town. Be adopted to the amendment up to the zone code of town, this board has reviewed, proposed modifications to the legislation over several. Months time, the three members of this board have served on a subcommittee, which is carefully considered. All the issues related to this legislation have reported, addressed the comments of the council legislation. The committee members have recommended to this board the legislation to adopt it in its present form, and this board accepts that recommendation. After also taking into the opportunity to suggest modifications to the proposal, many of us are favoring this final legislation, this board finds. This legislation meets the goal of mixed use of legislation, these notifications further improve. Uh, the legislation in place by providing framework for vehicle. Wherein larger parcels, uh, of land made with both town or planning board have caused the development. A mixed use project that will enhance the town and be beneficial to responsible developers. I'm gonna, you know, Dave, make that motion. And I'll second. All the favors. Thank you. With that being said, uh, I have one.
All right. I got one. I wanna. Uh, you want to do this, uh, during the meeting, or do you want to do it later? Uh. But the, the, you're at A, you're at B.
Sure, you can talk, you can talk about it, go ahead.
Um. So I've been talking to Doug and Terry a little bit about setting up. Right now, our review areas are too tight, so what we do is, why are we gonna come back, we certainly have drawings done by. So you've, you've been talking about shifting the submission dates to do a track system, go a track A, track B. So when somebody will come in, submit a set of drawings, they get placed on the track. That track B, you know, track A, and it has submission dates, so when they get to. You know, either a recommendation for us, or, you know, past concept. Preliminary or final. They have, it's like two weeks before their next submission due. And the benefits of doing this, and then it allows not only the applicants sufficient time to do coordination, take our comments, but it allows Doug's office, Terry's office to. Get those comments back to them in submission. I'm great. Uh. So. What I'd like to do is, the comfort of this board is give Doug and Terry the ability to implement this track A or B. Start getting people on us, do applications that come in. Getting placed on a, on a particular submission track, once you're on that track A, you're on track A. If you miss a submission date, time. You miss it, you're not just getting on to now the track B, it's gonna keep those projects kind of. Silent, so ready to run can be once. Session, we'll still meet twice a month. But we're gonna now keep our projects moving once a month in there, which allows them to do all their coordination, and all the drives in. You know? We see it, and I know Doug sees it, when a lot of these trucks come in, they're just very coordinated. You know, we either spend three or four meetings talking about these projects, because they want to come every two weeks, one times.
Yeah.
Instead of just taking our comments, doing the due diligence part, and then coming back to us. Four weeks later. And then we do, and if we do that right, we should be able to see them for a concept, preliminary, and a final, and they're done.
That way, they've got the schedule, we know what it is. And I think it helps them.
This is, uh, I, I, so it's a point, it's, that's. That thing.
Exactly.
Well, I, yeah, yeah, some though, it's correlated in my mind to the the quality of their consultants. Some of them, but I think when you put their consultants under pressure to get things turned around and come in, they just, they're like, they just. Well, no, I know, but some just don't have, I don't care if it's a month or two months, they're not even gonna get it done, right, I, so I just want.
Well, we, well, we never give them dates to when they do it, and then. We kind of.
The dates are tough, I agree, and and this'll give you guys more flexibility.
It also helps us that we're moving them along, it's not that we're holding them up.
Right, and, and I put like a a draft scheduled together, which is scheduled, looking carrying it next year, since we know, but it. It will correlate a lot with the software resolutions and their meeting dates. Um, but when a project comes in, it now gives the planning office the ability to say. You have these dates, these are your submission dates. You miss them, fine, it's on you, but it goes to the next track A month. Yeah, there should be some. Letter. Email that goes out to them. Officially notifying them, this day has been missed, as per. Whatever you call this guideline.
Try.
Right, well, two, well, the second and the fourth. Thursday track, right, that's what it was.
Well, yeah, it's, and and I have it set up the track A, track B, because it doesn't always. It does work that way, kind of, but.
Does it depend on the complexity of the project?
Yeah, no. It, it doesn't, and that, they can still, like, if we have a really complex project. And they come in and we give them a bunch of comments, they can opt to skip a meeting. Come back, but they're not gonna go from track A to track B, they're not gonna come back two weeks later, or six weeks later. They stay on track A.
Well, what happens if you have, it's like a simple division, or like Hanson came in with her.
If it's a division, we can always do that in one or two meetings, you can do that in concept, and then do a preliminary, final, the next one.
But then it would take two months to do it, though.
No, but, but, not one month, because you got two meetings.
Two meetings.
I'm trying to decide.
No, because it would stay on track A, so they would submit it under track A, right, they will come to us. Or, you know.
Concept.
Concept, right, and we'd say, yep, this is, this is good to go. Finalize all of your stuff, get in the final submission by your next submission date. Which is two weeks later, gives them the time to do that work, and then you come in front of us, gives. Us an opportunity when we have the the pre-agenda meeting to to iron out any ones that aren't necessarily ready. When we meet on Tuesdays, we can sit down and say, yep, good to go, Thursday, they're, they're done.
I, I think even si- something simple. Once a month is fine, eh, we're, this is a pretty luxurious board that needs. Twice a.
Right.
You weren't gonna be religious on twice a month, you go to town and play.
Yep.
In other places, this one, there in once a month, no.
Yeah.
So, so Nathan, how did you decide? I'd show up first of the month. Does Doug have the ability to say you're either make, you're gonna be A or B based, or is it?
No, I mean, there's things to be, come in, the next, the next submission date, so like, let's just take tomorrow, what's tomorrow, seven fourteen? Let's hypothetically say somebody comes in tomorrow with a set of drawings, they wanna put in front of us in there, so seven fourteen. The next track A submission date, seven twenty, that's Thursday. Right, so they're on track A. If this, if it missed the track B submission, it would have been seven six.
Also, A is one. One B is a lot than B is.
So what, so what's the worst is six weeks, right, because you essentially have to turn it in, and then in worst case, you're gonna have a meeting in two weeks.
Right.
And then turn it around a month later, they could be done if they're good in six.
Um, yeah, so in this, in this instance, they would, they would submit.
So we're, so, so here's what's happening right now, hey, you guys don't see behind the scenes. Somebody comes in tonight. And, like these guys, like Joe said, B and C, they they're really good backs, right? So they they came in the first night, and we looked at everything, he said, hey, you know what, this looks like it's like eighty-five percent, go back to eight to two weeks. Well, what, what we wanna have available is we, we want to have. And then. Talk about this, we're struggling, trying to get links, we're trying to get this to work a little bit smoother, I think it's. And even with the blog.
Well, we just can still work with emails, so it's, right, we'll sort the process.
So what we're, so what we're trying to do is get drives. Downloaded at least seven to ten days ahead of time. So if somebody comes in tonight, there's no way, there's no way that they can get the drawings done us by. By, we're gonna do it in most cases, ten days.
To review.
In most cases, we give comments, even if we're. Really good and we get the comments up the next day. They're usually not able to turn around, they're, they're submitting stuff. They're submitting the Monday before our Tuesday meetings, and we, and we, these guys, Mark doesn't have a. These, these, these guys, these guys from the state came in. And they wanted to come in, even when you believe with their, showing facts, right? They had a red line drawing, they had an axe through the building and said, yeah, we didn't have time to change it. Could you please come in, and I said, no. Then they had, they had their, um. Their, uh, portometric, the portometric handling, you know, red, red velvet.
What was this?
These guys, B and C. And and and, I mean, they're on the skies, right, it was like, guys, come on.
But this is, this is, this is the result of being on a two week, they feel like they gotta.
Right.
One second, because I got, we got Mark here, I want to get, Mark, because it's outside, out of mind, I apologize, uh. Wha- what are your thoughts? Just sleeping, sleeping. But I think part of this is just expectation setting.
Yeah.
It is, what do you, in front of the client or the applicant.
That we can get rid of the anger, you can just try to fly in. These are, this is how we do.
So there's, there's that expectation setting, but there's also a huge, Doug and Terry, the ability to say, I'm sorry, you missed that deadline. You're not on this one, you're still on track A, but the next opportunity you have is the next track A session.
Which is damn, like, a lot of them opt, the good ones opt for that anyway.
You're right.
You know, I, I think a good example would be the chick's play. Right, you know, they say, hey, we're not gonna be ready for that, but we'll be ready for this next.
Right.
And so they really kind of place themselves on a track that they could meet.
And we can give them these dates ahead of time. You know, so that it's not.
Right, it's because they come in, here's your dates.
Here, here's, here are all track A dates, and if you opt to miss one, here's the next date.
Can we just, you know, one thing that'll be helpful.
I love that.
What I was saying, they've done a great job, they've actually waited so for the rest of the year.
Just like the cooling towers, that that's, they don't be kicking around. And all you have to do is tell them, go look at the cooling towers if they're already over in the project. Come with those drawings and we'll prove it.
So, uh, what I would say, Terry, is is that, that that schedule. We can hand out, even if the initial orientation, when we'll meet with a a larger project. Then they'll say, okay, where do we go from here, they'll say, well, we'll start, now we'll have an actual schedule to say, here's where you go, and here's what happens if you can't meet these. Targets, this is, so there'll be an upfront notification.
So when I get the application in, we'll send out an email, basically. That, uh, knows that we see the application here, you're on track A, you're on track B, you're on the dates.
But even if you want, to Doug, to Doug, let me just add one thing to to that in itself, was when an application comes in. It doesn't necessarily mean that the application's been accepted, okay, so this, this also allows their office, or an opportunity to look at this and say, okay. You don't have everything you need, or.
You're on no track.
You're on, you're not on the track yet, right, so then it it says, it.
If we had, we had a timeline, you know. Uh, your plan submitted, plans accepted.
How long is the thing? But I want, two, two questions, I, I kind of want to come back to this, but I get an older thought, forget this. Um, to your point, how long does it take you to process what they do ask? You know, is it, is it, are you down to a manageable period, or? In terms of when somebody puts their, puts their plans down, to review those plans to see if they're, they.
They need.
The, the guidelines.
The minimum to get accepted.
How quickly can you do that, this in a general context?
Well, it it depends on, you know, what's going on, I'd give it a week, right, so I mean, I mean. Anywhere from. Two to four days.
But what's, there's, there actually is something in our quote, like, we have to. Either provide, notify, or accept it within ten days or something like that, isn't there some?
Yeah, whatever, buy it by there, buy there. But what this does, uh, in my. Buy there, but what this does, i- in my mind, is this will in writing manage their expectations. Because th- they expect Doug and Terry to turn this around at us very quickly, bang, we get in, and we're expecting to be on this work session, and this, we say, well, wait a minute, we haven't even had a concept review, we got this, but when you show them that and say, when this is officially submitted and accepted, then track begins.
Mm-hmm.
And if you miss those dates, and it just, and, and the other things, you get the call from Matt, who says, you know, you've held this up for whatever reasons, this, that, that should be documented to say, clearly, here's the.
We've given them the dates, they missed the date, it's not on us at that point, they're now, the next available date is here, we laid it all out in the beginning, so.
Well, I, that, that.
And it's been sorry to shut up, but other towns that I've worked with, it is literally noon on Wednesday, the thirteen.
That's it.
One P M?
Yeah, that's it.
It's a.
Yeah.
I mean, that's like that.
Okay, so you have an administrative assistant in the office, because she could take that, and when they miss something, just send out an email, so we get proof that, you know, and you, you guys don't have to be bothered with that.
Or they could come back and say, well, we did submit it, and then you'd be able to check a balance on it.
Yeah.
The thing to say, oh my gosh, we better check that out.
Do they get stamped when it comes in, or they, they stamp or nothing?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be important.
Supposed to be important. They're making progress, they're making progress.
I think the only suggestion would be is if they show up and they would normally, based on Doug's rule, it would be track A. I think, if it's not too complicated, we say, I'm not like, I don't, I'm not gonna be ready for track A, can I be track B? But whatever they eventually, they're stuck with it.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, they can, they can say.
I'm not ready, you know, you, fact A, I gotta be ready in a week, I'm not gonna be ready, I'm ready in three weeks, can I do B then?
Right, they, that.
Instead of passing A and then having.
But we're not gonna, we're not gonna start on track A and be like, okay, well, now I'm ready, I, I want this to be ready in two weeks, so I'm gonna go to track B.
So if you came up with a form, and when they submit, you staple that form, and it says, submitted, approved, so you got those, so that, that's proof.
So more or less, all I wanted to do. Doug and Terry in the backing of this board to implement a track A and track B, I don't think we need to necessarily do anything, it's on their office.
I think you're informal.
But I don't know, a hundred percent supportive of this, but this, it just, it's gonna play some structure, it's something.
Organize the chaos.
Organize the chaos, and then we're to have responsibility for the chaos.
Right, so you, you could create a form that basically says, you can pick A or B's, and you pick A, then these are your dates, and pick B, then these dates.
Yeah.
And two days, come back and tell them when you picked A or B, and then that's, that's good.
I, I do wanna say that the supervisor is very, um, sensitive to the fact that this board works so hard as volunteers and is called on to, um, you know, just do things on the spur of the moment, and he supports anything, I think, that is going to make it you know, better for these, this group that is.
I, I, I guess, I'll be honest with, with you, I don't know, in, in my mind, uh, I think in the global picture, but I notice there's a lot of times when people have complained, and it, it, there are issues why it hasn't progressed, and there is a, I don't, I remember all the thought and all the sensitivity that people understand on the town board why we make certain decision. This really provides an avenue, condition to, to document.
Stop all the nonsense like over here at, uh, on, um, Maple Drive, that they ran out all the way along.
But even in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would stop that.
Yeah, exactly.
And part of that, you know, so, and it also does, I mean, it's really hard to get your head around, you know, back to Ethan Allen or back to, you know, whether it's, uh, a lot of things, but anyhow.
Cause then it gets rid of the state company. My, Nathan and I were out in the business world, like, we hear it all.
I know.
I hear it all.
They don't, they don't know the background, what these guys got to do, right?
Yeah.
Or anybody else, they just know that it took five months to do it.
Right.
Which in reality is too long, right?
I was at a place, someone said that, I said to her, excuse me, and she mentioned the project, and I said, we're still waiting for them to bring paperwork, and she goes, oh, well, I didn't know that side of it, I said, of course not, you know, but that's what happened.
You know, but also, this gives the timeline, you know, other things that I work on is, is putting a clear checklist together, or something that actually gets stable to the application, that the applicant needs to.
And they check out.
And they check it, that it's been done, and Doug's office looks at it, it's like, no, like, the survey is not accurate in here, then I'm sorry, it gets kicked out, and it's not on us. Definitely.
And there's, there is some discretion, cause I know sometimes you come to me and say, you know, this project, the survey isn't as critical, we're gonna need an updated survey, but we could have a concept review, and then there, there needs to be that kind of, uh.
Or you can have a content section.
You know, that, that says, say, we approved this, and Doug and Terry have the figures on the pulse, it's now what we can do, and, you know, something like this, uh, with the.
Well, I'll tell you that checklist, I, I, I was in, um, town state atlas. I would have every check.
No, right.
G nine.
But it also, again, it, it, for the oldest applicant to do the proper reporting, to get the information in place, so that we're not searching for it, he's not breaking his hair, trying to figure out like, what the red line marks are, and also.
This is my own office when I built a house, because the customers were, well, how come you're not here yet? Well, it was the date you were supposed to hit, the selections in, you know, the plan, da, 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 I mean, it works, it's perfect.
Right, you, you have the staff now to, to, to utilize a checklist and, and, cause we didn't have the staff before. We were very, uh, we're a very much better player, but thank you all.
You're welcome. You know, the job depends, you know, these professionals come in the neighborhood, it's the applicants that have no.
Well, that's my, that was my point, that if you.
Process, so this.
Exactly.
But that will help too, because, because they're the ones who complain, and they wanna come down.
Yeah, well, they have to show their client that they're pushing it to do it, so, you know, I mean.
Although, I'm talking about, I guess.